I'd like to call a meeting to order, please rise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Good evening, everyone, welcome to the Township of Olbridge zoning board of adjustment meeting, September 6th, 2018. Adequate notice to this meeting of the Olbridge Township Zoning Board of Adjustment has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, at least forty-eight hours prior to the commencement of this meeting, by prominently posting in the municipal complex an announcement giving the time, the date, the location, and the agenda of this meeting, also by mailing such announcement to the home news and Tribune, finally by filing a copy of such announcement with the municipal clerk. Ms. Silverman, could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Duhler?
Here.
Ms. Kellbo?
Here.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Here.
Mr. Sacks?
Here.
Mr. Darjean?
Present.
Mr. Dunham?
Here.
Mr. Kay?
Mr. Cleo Clonie is here.
As a matter of housekeeping issues, I'd ask everyone in the courtroom to please silence their phones, in deference to those that are going to be testifying before us tonight, so there's no interruptions, the same to the board members. The other item is, this meeting is being televised on OBT, OBTV-15, and as such, it goes off the air at 10:00 PM. So if you're at home watching and this goes long, I don't think it will this evening, but should it go beyond ten o'clock, the TV will cut off at home. There's a couple items I would like to mention before we go to the agenda. It was the passing of two prominent citizens of here of the community who served this community and its citizenry rather well. Anna Miller, 93, of Olbridge, passed away at home on Sunday, September 2nd, 2018. Born in Belle Meade, to the late Henry and Emily Switchenberg, she settled in Olbridge in 1950 with her husband Carl to raise their family. Together they owned and operated Harris Hardware, Madison for thirty-six years, and retirement Anne became increasingly active in the community as a member of the Olbridge Historical Society, the Women's Club of Madison, and the Planning Board of Olbridge. And Mr. Sacks and myself were just saying how she used to come and attend the zoning board meetings as well. Secondly, I'll announce the passing of Arthur Haney. Arthur Haney, prominent figure in Middlesex County as the Olbridge mayor, appointed official, freeholder, GOP chairman, had broader influence on civic and political life for across four decades. His accomplishments were many. Arthur Michael Haney, former mayor of Olbridge and Middlesex County freeholder, passed away on Tuesday, August 14th, with his family at his site. He was seventy years of age. I'd ask everyone for a moment of silence for the passing of those two individuals. Thank you very much. All right, we'll continue on the agenda. Item number two is resolutions. The first one is 21-18Z. Okay, you all right? We're used to that, you know, you did that before. You just scare me every time. All right, first resolution is 21-18Z, Harnum Ratu. Mr. Sacks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is application 21-18Z, Harnum Ratu, an application for D4 and C variances, property located Block 16005, Lot 325, 6 Stone Ridge Drive. This was an application which was heard on July 19th of 2018. Property is located in the R-12 zone, the applicant was applying for C variances and D4 use variance for a floor area ratio to construct a 511 square foot, one-story addition to the existing home. The proposed addition included a bedroom, bathroom, closet, pull-down staircase that provides access to the attic. The permitted FAR in the R-12 zone is .21. The current FAR for that property was .18, and the proposed addition would result in a .23 floor area ratio. There were also two separate C variances for minimum front yard setback on Diamond Lane and minimum front yard setback on Stone Ridge Road. There actually was one witness who testified, Mr. Ratu, who indicated that the addition was necessary for health reasons to put this on the first floor. Mr. Ratu also confirmed that a previous business on-site had been abandoned, that the proposed, or that the existing attic space would not be used for any habitable purposes, and that the basement is unfinished and if finished in the future would require board approval. And this application was approved on July 19th.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Board members, you've heard the resolution, someone want to move it for memorialization?
Motion, Walker?
A second.
Second to Mr. Stoner. Roll call, please.
Ms. Kellbo?
Yes.
Mr. Walker? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Second item is 22-18Z, Saethen Devon. Mr. Sacks.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, Saethen Devon, application 22-18Z, property located Block 24000, Lot 39.21, 19 Red Shaw Boulevard. This was an application that was heard on August 2nd of 2018. Property is located in the R-20 zone. This particular applicant was also applying for a use variance for a floor area ratio to finish the existing basement. The existing home has a floor area of 2,953 square feet, which translates into an FAR of .15. The unfinished basement measures 1,172 square feet, and the total gross floor area would then be 4,125 square feet, which results in a floor area ratio of .20. The maximum permitted in the R-20 zone is .17. Mr. Devon testified at the time of the hearing, he indicated that the finished basement was necessary to serve the needs of his growing family. He noted that it will have an open floor plan, no bathroom, and will only be, and will not be utilized for any commercial purposes, or as an Airbnb or transient housing. He also noted that other homes in the neighborhood have similar finished basements. And again, this was an application heard on August 2nd, and the resolution is before you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Board members, you've heard the resolution, someone want to move it?
I'll move it.
Mr. Stoner moves it, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Kilduff, roll call, please.
Mr. Duhler?
Yes.
Ms. Kellbo?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Kellbo? Yes.
Yes. We have escrow deficiencies, resolutions next, board members. I'm going to read all four in, two of them have been paid since they went on the agenda. 12-18Z Fountainhead OBLLC, $8,000 deficiency, that has been paid. 42-17Z, that's DSZ LLC, $2,500. 21-18Z, Harnum Ratu, $450, that has been paid. And finally, 23-18Z, Coastal International LLC, in the amount of $1,500. We can move them as a group if someone would be so inclined?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Duhler?
Yes.
Ms. Kellbo?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Item number three on your agenda is discussion, this is Whispering Woods hearing on a proposed court settlement. Peter Klausert is representing the applicant on this. I'm going to turn this matter over to Mr. Sacks for advice to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board may recall, back in 2017, this applicant Premier Media LLC was before this zoning board, seeking a use variance and bulk variance relief to construct a billboard on property located on Route 9 South, near the intersection of Ernston Road, in the township of Olbridge. The board, by a vote of four to three in favor of the application, effectively denied the application since it was a use variance, which required five affirmative votes, and the applicant only achieved four affirmative votes. Subsequently, a lawsuit was filed as a complaint in lieu of prerogative writs in the Superior Court of New Jersey in Middlesex County, and this matter was scheduled for trial on July 30th of 2018. Prior to that date, I did have some discussions with counsel for the plaintiff, Mr. Klausert, who's here this evening, to discuss a possible settlement of this, and this also occurred after having, I believe, a case management conference with the Honorable James Hurley prior to that. And as a result of those discussions that I had with Mr. Klausert, I, it was my opinion that this was a case that should be settled. What I did is, prior to discussing the settlement with Mr. Klausert, I polled some of the members of the board who did vote in the negative on this application, and as a result of my discussions with them, I believe I had the authority to settle this case. So, the procedure in terms of settling a case in the Superior Court and under the municipal land use law and under case law is that the applicant has to come back before the zoning board on public notice to present the terms of the settlement. And maybe, Mr. Klausert, I'll present the terms of the settlement, you can just confirm that that's what the terms were. And certainly, the members of the public who were noticed, who would have been within 200 feet of this application, if they have any objections still or any questions, they certainly can voice that. My recollection is, I don't think there were any objectors at the initial hearing when this was voted for to three. But that's essentially the procedure. So, you know, we'll go through the public, we'll go through, Mr. Klausert wants to make any presentation, that's fine, but I'll briefly go into what the terms of the settlement are, and then, Mr. Chairman, if you want to open it up to the public, and then the board can vote on this.
Let the vote on it again?
Well, we have to vote on the settlement. Yeah. We have to vote on the settlement, okay? All right, so, anyway, the terms of the settlement essentially are that the plaintiff's complaint alleging that this board acted arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable in turning down the application for use variance and bulk variance relief is going to be dismissed without prejudice. However, that is subject to several conditions, and one of the conditions is that the board will approve this application at this particular point to permit an outdoor advertising sign to be located on Block 5,000, Lot 3, which is Highway Route 9 South, and the addition, several additional conditions will be imposed upon this. One of them is that the lights illuminating the outdoor advertising sign shall be turned off no later than 10:30 PM and shall be turned on at dusk. So therefore, effectively, it will be dark between the hours of 10:30 PM and until dusk the following day. The outdoor advertising sign is proposed to contain a static display. The plaintiff, in this case Premier Media, agrees not to seek approval to modify same to an LED display, and I know this board is familiar with the LED process where the message would change every eight, 10, 12 seconds, whatever, we've actually run the gamut on that, all right, but in any event, it changes several times every minute. But they'll agree that it'll be a static display. Certainly if a future owner of the outdoor advertising sign wants to apply for LED display with multiple messages per minute, they would have to seek approval from this board. And lastly, the applicant agreed to make a deposit of $6,000 to be utilized by the municipality for reimbursement of litigation costs, in accordance with the municipal land use law, and that would cover professional costs associated with defending this litigation. If the board is so inclined to agree to that settlement, then the approval, this board would then effectively have approved the construction and the use variance for this billboard with those conditions. So, Mr. Klausert, maybe just briefly, and again, did I accurately state what the terms of the settlement were?
Yes, for the record, Peter Klausert with the firm Hilebrand-Pape, yes, you did, I'm certainly pleased you've seen me in front of this board on many occasions, I'm certainly pleased we were able to provide some conditions that work for the board. Mr. Sacks has outlined them accurately, he's also outlined the procedure accurately, both as to the history of how we got here and what the Whispering Woods nature is. Yeah, so I would just ask that we, I did bring Mike Pucci, but I had, I have no presentation for him. I would add that Nicole's report she had written originally, there were a couple of technical comments, and they'll be in the resolution, we'll comply with those, there are no issues with that.
Right, and I believe even on the prior approval, you, it was indicated in the resolution that any professional recommendations would be incorporated intending approval.
Right.
So that will still run with this. And, Mr. Klausert, maybe just briefly explain the size of this billboard for the board, and where it's going to be located. I don't know if Mr. Pucci wants to do that, or if you're, you could do it as well, I don't have.
Actually, all of that remains the same as part of this settlement, all of those, they're actually, they're all outlined in Nicole's report, the height of it, the size and square footage of the billboard, so I can actually pull from Nicole's report, rather than have to go through the exercise of bringing Mike in. It's a forty-foot-high billboard, it's V-shaped, and each face is fourteen by forty-eight, which is typical for the size of the board. It's, you know, the LED up illumination to avoid any of the glare or anything like that, and then, of course, we agree to the limitation on the lighting.
Okay, and it'll be a static billboard, okay. All right.
One question, are we using the wrong word of dusk? Shouldn't we be using dawn?
No, well, there's no need to, no need to light it during the day.
Isn't it off at 10:30 till the morning? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, basically, it comes on again at dusk and goes off at 10:30.
Oh, yeah, we shut them off at 10:30, they don't come on again until dusk.
Until dusk the following day.
So they're off at 10:30 all the way around until dusk, they stay on.
All the way around, okay. So it is the right word?
Correct.
You're in good company, because Judge Hurley called me on the same thing when I made the description tell him.
Okay, all right.
He said, are you doing that wrong, Peter?
I don't know if I'm in good company with Judge Hurley.
But thank you.
Foot in mouth.
Yeah, well, me too. Let me see if the board has any questions of either Mr. Sacks, or perhaps Mr. Klausert on my left. I guess everyone's familiar with this application, right? And on my right, any questions? None? How about if I go to the public?
Please do.
I don't have a number on this, but, do you have it? Do you have it, Kim?
I have your application. Nicole has the application, there was the resolution, 38-16Z, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. This is matter 38-16Z, this is in reference to a proposed court settlement for the erection of a billboard, V-board, on Route 9 South to Ernston Road, for those of you, maybe you would understand it if I said Gateway Plaza, or where the Texas Roadhouse is, just south of that position. Does anyone here in the courtroom this evening want to be heard on this matter? No one has come forward, we'll close the public portion. Advice, we're just going to go for a vote here?
We're going to go for a vote, and I think the only eligible members to vote would be anyone who voted on that application originally. No, 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 we can take the, yes, but we can only take the voters, the members of the board who were present when it was denied.
Do you have that?
Yeah.
Who was it here? Okay, so, Mr. Duhler?
Ms. Kellbo?
Mr. Stoner?
Mr. Walker?
Okay, fine. Okay, so, somebody can make a motion, second it, and then we can just. I'll make the motion to approve the settlement.
I'll second it.
Seconded by the vice chair. Roll call, please.
Mr. Duhler?
Yes.
Ms. Kellbo?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Klausert.
Have a wonderful evening.
Do the same, thank you.
For those watching at home and here in the courtroom, we're just going to take a brief, not a recess, we're just going to stop for a moment while the court reporter changes, I guess, the tape, or something like that?
Do the continuances.
Yeah, I got to read them in. Sure, she doesn't, can I read them in, is that going to bother you? Continuances?
Okay.
Item four on the agenda is continuances. We have two. First one is 13-18Z, it's Wawa Inc., 3,600 US Highway 9, that's for existing convenience store with fuel, adding a diesel dispenser and installation of underground fuel storage tank for diesel. That's going to require a major site plan preliminary and final with devariance. The applicant is asking that matter to be continued to October 4th with further notice. If you're here on that matter this evening, will not be heard, will be on the agenda October 4th, 2018. Secondly is 36-14Z, Pleasant Valley Estates LLC, that's at Pleasant Valley Road and County Route 527, for 147 age-restricted condominium dwellings, units for sale with clubhouse, pool, and recreational facilities for passive and active recreation. It's going to require a devariance. The applicant in that matter is asking that it be continued to October 4th, 2018 with further notice. If you're here on that matter, will not be heard this evening, will be on the agenda for October 4th. And with that, we're ready, right? Okay. We have one application this evening, it's the last on the agenda, it's 12-18Z, it's the Fountainhead OBLLC, it's 3 Mill Road, 3 Old Mill Road, excuse me, it's in the R-20 zone, this is for 68 age-restricted townhouses, two three-story buildings, clubhouse, pool, gazebo. It's going to require a devariance or use variance. Steve Gohn is representing the applicant. Mr. Gohn.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Mr. Chairman, thank you. That was a pretty good summary, I could probably just jump right to Sean. But why don't I recap where we've been a little bit. So, we were here on July 19th for the first portion of this application. At that time, we were proposing a development that would consist of 75 age-restricted townhome units. What happened at that hearing was, we presented most of our direct case, we did hear from some of the residents, some of the residents had comments, we heard a few comments from the board. We went back and we revised our plan to address, hopefully, all of those comments. And what we have done is, we have revised the development now to remove one of the three buildings that was previously proposed. We've scaled it back from 75 age-restricted townhome units to 68 stacked townhome units. We've relocated the driveway along Spring Mill Road, relocated the stormwater management along Spring, at the entrance along Spring Hill Road, and there is still a clubhouse and a pool area for the residents. This allowed us to increase the proposed landscaping for the project as currently shown. We've eliminated the landscaping ratio variance that we were previously asking for, and the other variances that we were seeking have either been reduced, or the conformity has been reduced that we are seeking approval for tonight. Again, this is a bifurcated application, so we are only seeking variance relief at this time, particularly the use, as townhomes are not permitted in this zone, along with a few other ancillary variances, including height, density, and bulk variances, and then obviously, if those are approved, we would move on to the site plan phase of this application. So, I think Mr. Delaney, who's sitting next to me, is already sworn in, so he can continue, and he's already been accepted as a engineering professional. So, Sean, why don't you tell the board what we've done?
Mr. Delaney, I'll caution, you're still under oath.
Yes, thank you. Just the one. What is the exhibit number, if I can reference it?
A-7.
A-7.
So, we're going to call this exhibit A-7, which is, Sean, why don't you describe?
Certainly, it's a two-dimensional color rendering of the use variance plan that was submitted, with some additional, with some landscaping that was added to it of the new plan that was revised, dated 9/6/18, prepared by my office. So as Mr. Gohn pointed out, we revised the plan based on comments we received last, at the last hearing, removing one building which was located in the western portion of the site, adjacent to Lot 9.15, basically where the clubhouse is here, it was located to the top of the page of that, that's been removed. The number of units for the property, project reduced from 75 to 68, still an age-restricted development. The room breakdown, we originally were proposing 75 two-bedroom units, that has been changed to now 23 one-bedrooms and 45 two-bedrooms. So by doing that as well, we're increasing the number of units, we're also possibly increasing the population as well by limiting the bedrooms in there also. As Steve pointed out, the, they are, realistically, they're kind of stacked townhomes, there are 16 garages and driveways in each building for the 34 units, so not everybody will get a driveway and a garage. The remainder of the parking has been placed along the drive aisle through the site to make up the requirements that are needed for IRSIS compliance. The clubhouse has been relocated further to the south away from Route 34, has been reduced slightly from 2,600 square feet to 2,000 square feet. The concrete and appurtenances associated with it also reduced, for those walking past, to reduce the impervious coverages, put it more essentially located towards the buildings where they're now, all against that eastern property line. Big change was moving the driveway, that was a concern raised by both the board and the public at last, at the last meeting, and the professionals as well. The driveway has been shifted 120 feet to the north up Spring Hill Road, to provide better line of sights, bigger throat coming into the site as well for that. The basin was originally on one side of the road, on the north side of that access aisle previously, it's now split on the two sides of the road. Obviously, the basins have been preliminary sized for volume. If the application was looked upon favorably by the board, the actual design would be done as part of the site plan process. The basins were designed to collect all the runoff from the proposed development and meet the quantity reductions, the water quality, and the recharge requirements of the stormwater regulations and the RSIS standards. The benefits of this is, right now, there is a, about a 30-foot grade relief along the site from Route 34 down to Spring Hill Road. So right now, all the water that does drain there, while it is wooded, anywhere that gets into it would soak into the ground and flow in that, in that westerly direction towards Spring Hill Road. And there's one inlet across the street that catches the rain runoff from there, but it then also possibly could flow across the street, uncontrolled groundwater through that way. By putting the two basins down at the lower end of our site, we would be capturing all that runoff that, right now, is going uncontrolled into the ground and in that southern, in that westerly direction, and would control its release rate and the impact of the stormwater to the residents that are further west. There were concerns that we heard last month about, you know, flooding that goes on right now, water in basements, flooding of septic fields. We believe that with the two basins and the stormwater system, we would be able to hold the water back and reduce the flooding potential that would be going there by controlling it as required. And then, by all means, also, you know, the reductions that we have are minimum, that we have to standard, every effort will be made to try and exceed those minimum standards to provide further relief for those residents. As Mr. Gohn pointed out, the variances, we're still seeking four devariances, the D1 use, the D4 FAR, by reducing, we're eliminating one of the buildings, the building's got a slightly a little bigger than previous, than the previous units, but the FAR has been reduced from 0.41 down to 0.38, where .17 is required. The density, the requirement of 1.8 is for the zone, we were at 11.61 previously, we're down to 10.5. The height remains the same at a 40-foot height where 35 is permitted. In terms of C variances that we're asked for, once again, the height for the three, two and a half versus three stories that we're proposing is unchanged. Parking setbacks to the buildings, separation between the buildings are all unchanged as before as well. And the buffer to the residential undeveloped spaces is a 50-foot buffer, that occurs to the east side of the property line behind the buildings where the, sorry, the emergency fire access is located. The lot that's further to the east is an undeveloped, that portion of the lot is undeveloped and wooded, it is a residential lot, so we're required to have a 50-foot buffer there. But the only thing back there disturbing would be that fire lane, which have, which would have limited use. The one variance that we did eliminate was the landscape ratio variance. Previously, we were asking a 49 percent, where 55 was required, so we are shy by 6%. We are now proposing 57.7 percent on the site. In terms of quantities or so, that's about, that's over a half an acre of impervious surface that we have removed from the development, which will, once again, impact the stormwater or reduce the stormwater volume coming off the site further. It allows us to maintain a lot of additional existing vegetation on the site, specifically on that western side, adjacent to Lot 915 and Lot 913. And we believe that'll also, will decrease the amount of runoff leaving this property and affecting the neighbors downstream. And that's the access aisle configuration, drive aisle, previously, we had a triangle in the site as well, by one of the buildings for circulation by the clubhouse on the northern side. We replaced that with a cul-de-sac now, so vehicles that can come in can now fully turn around at the end, and exit back out with the two hammerheads for the two parking areas to the south of the southernmost building and to the north of the, near the cul-de-sac. We're also maintaining the fire lane out to Route 34, Old Mill Road that we had proposed previously, got a little bigger, were able to move it more towards Old Mill Road and get it away from the intersection a little better as well for more safety, for access in and out. Other than that, the Um, other than that, the, the, in terms of some of the setbacks and the alignments of the buildings, they haven't changed. Those two buildings are still in the same spots as was previous before. Except, they just got a little bigger to accommodate the couple extra units we're putting in there by losing the, the third building on the site. That's it.
So, that's, I mean, that's a summary of what we've changed. I don't really have anything further for Mr. Delaney unless the board or professionals have questions.
Go to the professionals and see. What was the landscape area ratio changed?
It went from point-four, oh, sorry, it went from forty-nine percent in a variance to fifty-seven-point-seven.
Oh, don't, so you're eliminated, right?
We eliminated, yes.
Thank you. Okay, I just wanted to get that straight. Mr. Darji.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, um, the applicant has revised their plan in accordance with a lot of the comments in our, in our review letter, uh, and they provided the testimony that we've asked for in, in our letters. I don't have any direct questions for Mr. Delaney at this time, um, but a lot of the comments in our letter really have to do with, from an engineering perspective at least, I'll let Mr. Kullua Kalani handle the, uh, the planning aspects and Mr. Drum handle the traffic aspects. But the, from the engineering perspective, most of the comments that we have, uh, really have to deal with, uh, details that could get handled should the board act favorably on this application at, at the site plan stage. We did ask for some testimony, which Mr. Delaney did provide regarding stormwater management, because there were some concerns, uh, regarding the drainage on the road. Um, and I, I concur with Mr. Delaney that the site basically drops from thirty-four on Old Mill Road towards Spring Hill, and, uh, it's quite a bit of a drop, so you have quite a bit of runoff that just comes through that area. And obviously, developing a site increases runoff, but, but there, there will be a stormwater management system that, that gets put in, and by ordinance and by D E P rules, the applicant is required to, to reduce the, the rate of runoff, so, so as to, uh, so as to not exacerbate any flooding, in fact, to improve, uh, flooding conditions downstream. So, in, in that regard, the, you know, just by operation of, of the, of those rules, there should be a improvement to, to drainage. Uh, and of course, at the time of site plan, should the board act favorably, uh, we'll evaluate any, any issues, uh, and see if the applicant can mitigate, uh, some additional issues. If there are issues that are on the roadway, maybe we can mitigate some of those issues at the site plan, again, if, if this moves forward. So, that being said, I don't have any direct questions for Mr.
Just for, just for the record, you said that you now have no engineering issues that are left open.
At this, at this time.
At this time.
Yeah, there are.
Okay.
Some that we'll, we'll deal with should the board act favorably.
Okay. Mr. Kullua Kalani? How about that? See, I practiced.
They have reduced, uh, significantly the impacts that I was concerned about. The, the most significant was that, uh, building that they had proposed on the westerly side of the site. Uh, as the plan shows now, they're gonna keep the, uh, existing tree cover there to max- maximum extent possible. Um, they're still gonna have to clear that lower area where the, you know, that, where the basins are proposed. I mean, but in all fairness, that's where the water wants to go, and regardless of what you do there, that, that's the area that's gonna get impacted. I know on, on the graphic up there, it doesn't really show that it can be revegetated too much. It kinda looks much, much like grass. Um, there are ways that you can revegetate it, reforest it. I mean, there's plants that can thrive in that sort of a circumstance. It might even enhance the views, I mean, depending on what you plan in that area. Um, the other impact is, they're still encroaching on this buffer on the, uh, on the easterly side. I'll note that that area right now is undeveloped, and I, looking on the plan, it, it's an isolated wetland, so I'm not sure how developable that land is. I mean, it doesn't mean it can't be developed someday, but it, it would appear that they could eliminate that buffer by shifting everything in a westerly direction. But, of course, that would take them closer to the residents and, and that, uh, school. So, all in all, if you're gonna, it, it's, makes sense to me to put it down there and, and encroach as much as you can in that area. I mean, that would be like a C-two bulk variance. I mean, it would be, you know, you could basically defend that, so. Um, and I guess the other area is, is since the woods, you're, you're clearing a lot of area, I, I notice you're proposing some, uh, reforestation along Old Mill Road and, and state highway, so they're gonna be giving back some, some things too, so that's gonna help mitigate things also. Um, that's, that's pretty much what I have.
One, one thing I will say regarding the variances, um, I don't know if we discussed what, what relief the applicant is actually seeking tonight. I, I would tend to, uh, to feel that, that maybe we should hold off on the bulks and, and just really deal with the D-variances, uh, because the bulks are, are likely to change as, as you go through the design development. So, there's really no point in, in, in going through that exercise, at least, that's my opinion. I don't know if the applicant has a different opinion.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't have any objection to that as well. Certainly, the, you, if, if this application is approved by this board, uh, then the use variance is granted as to the concept of what's being proposed here with the number of buildings, the number of units, and the, uh, associated site improvements, but certainly, it's still gonna be subject to site plan, preliminary and final.
So, things like density and things like that, that, that's what we'll deal with at this stage. Bulks with regards to buffers and all that kinda stuff, really, I would, I would hold off on that.
I agree. Mr. Goan?
That's fine. The only one I would say, um, is the, we're asking for a height variance for forty feet, um, and we're asking for a bulk for three stories instead of two-and-a-half.
Right, that, that, the, the bulk for the three-story versus two-and-a-half, I would agree with. The, the height is actually a D-variance.
It's a D-six.
It gets subsumed in the D-six.
It's subsumed in.
Yeah, yeah, the height also subs. Now, the rest of it, I agree. Um, I do wanna to point out, um, I'm not gonna get it right, so I'm gonna say Mr. Kay. Um, Mr. Kay's comment about the, uh, the area along Spring Hill Road, it's not shown on the concept plan, and I'm gonna put the pressure on Sean, um, to address this in the event that we do get to the site plan phase. Um, the plan would be, from the applicant's perspective, to keep as many of the mature trees along, in that area that already exist, 'cause there are a number of mature trees there. So, the extent that we can keep them, we will, um, and I'm sure the applicant would be, would be willing to look at things like buffers and screening and things like that with Mr. Kay.
We're talking about near the stormwater management?
Uh, no, on the, on Spring Hill Road, on that, that open area that Mr. Kay was talking about.
That is the, the overhead power line easement, so there are limited things we can do in there.
Right, I understand.
But, um, getting back to Mr. Goan, what was your question about by the basins and stuff, we would be certainly try to work the basins to provide a little extra room between the edge of the easement and the basin to, to put some additional landscaping in there, uh, some evergreen screenings there to supplement some of the existing, uh, deciduous trees that have grown into that, that easement a little bit, um, and do that to provide buffering from the street to, to try and hide the development a little bit.
And like I said, I'm gonna put the pressure on Sean to do that, so.
Well, well, again, and just, just so it's clear, and just so the public is clear as well, uh, if this application has acted favorably, it's a bifurcated hearing. You're only getting your use variance, height variance, potent, your D-four variance approval, your density.
One-four-five-six.
Yeah, so you're getting a D-one, D-four, D-five, D-six, but everything else is going to be reserved for site plan review. That would include submitting a landscaping plan, and certainly, it's the purview of this board and the professionals to even require more landscaping, uh, if, if necessary.
Agreed.
Mr. Drum, did you wanna weigh in on anything? Sorry, I didn't get to you yet.
Um, the other one, uh, we had two recommendations for, um, actually, traffic improvements along the frontage. One is to provide a shoulder area as much as we can from the, um, southern property line up to the access, uh, and, and that's pretty much somewhat mirrors on what's across the street with the, uh, residential development. And also, if you're heading south on Spring Hill Road, you know, there is a very wide shoulder, and then it tapers very quickly in, in front of this development. And one of our other recommendations, if there's enough right-of-way over there, is kinda extend that widening, um, just so you kinda, one, get rid of that button, you know, the pavement just stops, and also provide some type of a bypass area, uh, for this. And again, that was, uh, our two recommendations.
Thank you. And, uh, they were taken, Mr. Goan?
I'm gonna ask Sean to answer that question.
We'll, we'll work with your professionals to come up and accommodate the, um, the best solution out there to, to make it safe.
Okay. Anything else from the, our professionals?
Not this time.
Not at this time? Let me go to board members to my left. Questions on this? At this time? No? Board members on my right? Okay, you have another witness this evening?
Uh, Mr. Kennel, also under oath.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney.
Also under oath, also accepted, um, for traffic.
Mr. Kennel, I'll advise you that you're still under oath from the last hearing.
Yes. Good evening. Uh, just to briefly follow up on Sean's testimony, as he indicated, current application is reducing the number of units, which results in approximately ten percent reduction in traffic generation that be, uh, generated by this site, which would still yield the, the, uh, good levels of service that I testified earlier, where B-level service for exiting movements and an A-level service for left turns into the site. Uh, the site access, uh, as stated, has been shifted approximately a hundred-and-twenty feet to the north, and that provides site distance in excess of five-hundred feet where four-hundred-and-fifty feet is required. Um, and just a qualified, um, Mrs. Drum's comment, the plan will be amended to provide the shoulder along the site frontage. Uh, as far as on the southbound side, it all depends on availability of right-of-way if we can do something to kind of, uh, soften that abrupt, uh, transition. Um, as far as, and he spoke to parking, uh, R S I S does not distinguish between age-restricted versus market units. Uh, we're still providing, we meet the R S I S, R, R S I S requirement of a hundred-and-thirty-two parking spaces. It's my opinion, based on my experience, that the demand here will be somewhere between ninety and a hundred vehicles during peak times. And the site has been designed to provide positive onsite circulation for passenger vehicles, as well as the large wheel-based vehicles that'll service the site. That's the extent of my supplement.
I don't have anything else, so leave it to the board and professionals.
Any questions for Mr. Kennel, from, uh, Mr. Darji?
I don't know.
Mr. Kay. I shortened it that. Ms. Drum?
No, no.
Okay. Uh, board members on my left. Board members on my right?
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Coffin for planning? Also accepted, also sworn.
Ms. Coffin, I'll, uh, advise you that you're still under oath from the last hearing.
Um, same drill. What, what's changed and, and how has it impacted the proposal?
Uh, well, the changes to the application have reduced the overall intensity of the application and reduced the magnitude of some of the variances that are being requested and eliminated one of the variances, the minimum landscape area variance. If the board would like to hear a summary of my prior testimony, I can do that, but it really doesn't change the positive reasons for the variances. The site's still particularly suited, and the F A R and the density and the height that are proposed are still, uh, typical for a multifamily development and appropriate for the use that's being proposed. Uh, the only change here is really in terms of the negative criteria for the variance, and by reducing the magnitude of the use, the density, uh, the number of units, the F A R, the negative criteria in this case is being improved, so that the impact that this development would have would be less than what was previously proposed. So, we still have, uh, positive reasons that support the requested D-variances. Uh, the negative impact in this case is, in my opinion, not significant, and the, the variances can be granted.
And I think Ms. Coffin did, did a good job at the last hearing of providing a fuller, um, recitation of why our application meets the positive and negative criteria for the, uh, now the D-variances that we're seeking. Um, I don't have anything further, and, uh, unless the board or professionals have comments.
Mr. Darji of Ms. Coffin?
I have no questions.
Mr. Kay? Uh, Mr. Drum?
No.
Board members on my left?
Question?
Mr. Walker.
This is an R-twenty zone, correct?
Yes.
And this project does not fit the R-twenty zone?
Well, that's why we're here.
Thank you.
I just have a question. So, you only reduced it by nine units?
Yes.
You eliminated, you made the buildings bigger and only eliminated nine units?
Well, yeah, and we eliminated one building, and we increased the landscape coverage. We improved the buffering.
But you made the buildings more restricted?
Well, I didn't, but the application, yes.
I can give you a little bit.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Mr. Sax? Yeah, just a question. Uh, Ms. Coffin, just so the record's clear, and, and maybe the engineer had mentioned it before, but just indicate the D-four relief now, what the proposed F A R is, what it was under the prior, uh, plan, and I guess the density as well, right?
Uh, the prior F A R was point-four-one.
Right.
Uh, what's proposed now is point-three-eight.
Okay.
And what's permitted is point-one-seven.
Right.
And in terms of density, the proposed is ten-point-five. Now, what was previously proposed was eleven-point-six-one, and what's permitted is one-point-eight.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Is it, Mr. Sax, for you? That's it, yeah. Okay. Uh, you have no further witnesses.
I do not.
Would you like me to open it up to the public at this point?
Yeah. Yes.
For those in the public, I'm gonna open the public's, uh, portion. Uh, I see we have a lot of people. I'm sure everybody wants to be heard. I would ask people just, uh, we will listen to everyone. Just don't be repetitive if somebody said the same thing before you. You know, bring up your own point, and, uh, and, and the boards here, the boards here as citizens of this community, just like you are. Uh, we're volunteer citizens, so, uh, we have the same interests as you, so we're more than willing to listen. This is twelve-dash-eighteen Z Fountains at O B L L C, uh, three Old Mill Road for sixty-eight age-restricted townhouses. I open the public portions. Anyone wanna be heard in this matter? Come forward, sir. Sir, did you testify at the last hearing?
Yes, sir.
All right, just state your name for the record.
Asbjorn Nyhus. Nyhus, N-Y-H-U-S.
And your first name?
Asbjorn.
Wanna spell that?
J-O-R-N.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, sir.
I reside at, uh, seventy-five Spring Hill Road, directly across the street from, uh, this proposed development. While I appreciate the builders' efforts in, in scaling back, uh, a few units and having two bigger buildings versus three smaller buildings, uh, it still doesn't fit in with the, uh, landscape, the area, the buildings of that, uh, in that neighborhood. There, there are no townhouses around us. It's all private homes. Um, concern I just heard now, I live directly across the street, and, uh, I heard talk of a right-of-way and, uh, making a shoulder in my yard. Uh, that's a deal breaker for me personally. Uh, I don't wish to lose part of my property because this development wants to get put in. Um, it's been this, I've been there over twenty years, or twenty years now. Uh, I really, I don't wanna see this happen.
When you say lose part of your property, sir, what, what were you referring to?
Uh, where they say, we're saying the, uh, the existing shoulder then narrows rapidly. It narrows rapidly because that's my front yard, on the southbound Spring Hill Road.
I don't think they could do anything on your property.
Because actually, the, the, when it was surveyed, when I bought the house, the actual property stake is actually in the street.
Yeah, they, they can't take any of your property, yeah, without either requiring it, uh, or the municipality.
I just wanna be, you know, a hundred percent clear on that. I heard that.
Well, yeah, that's why I heard that, that's why I wanted you to, yeah, they can't do anything that, on your property.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I own right up to the street, as it is now.
And I'm sure the applicant is aware, aware of that.
Correct, yes.
Your house, sir, for the record, again, it would be to the north there of, well, actually to the west.
If you come out, if you pull out of the driveway of this development?
Which one?
The main driveway.
On Spring Hill?
On Spring Hill Road.
Go ahead.
If you drive straight there instead of turning, you'll be in my front yard.
Across the street?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else? Who's next? Come up, sir.
Sir, did you testify at the last hearing? All right, please raise your right hand, I'll swear you in. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth's up your gut? All right, please state your name, spelling your last name and address for the record.
David Ploskonka, P-L-O-S-K-O-N-K-A.
And your address, sir?
122 Route 34.
Thank you.
And I do support this project.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sir, where would your location be? Where is 122 for?
Across Street and Firehouse.
Okay, thank you. Who else wants to be heard? Come forward, sir.
Sir, did you testify at the last hearing?
Yes, sir.
All right, please state your name again for the record.
Sir, it's Ralph Maron.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Maron.
I live at 81 Spring Hill Road, directly across from this development. I'm just going to be completely frank with you guys. This is the most absurd proposal I've ever heard in my entire life. This is a two-lane road with no shoulder, numerous accidents on here over the past few years. How is it going to put all this traffic on that road? It's just crazy. Not to mention, we have no townhomes in this area. We have no buildings of this height. It's just going to change the entire neighborhood and reduce my property value significantly. Not to mention the flooding issues, because I have an easement on my property that contains a sewer that takes all the runoff from the street that goes through my property. I don't see how this proposal is going to change that. It's only going to make it worse. I'm going to have more water running through my yard every time it rains. It's just, my basement will flood. I mean, I've spent thousands of dollars mitigating my flood issues. They're only going to get worse. They're not going to get better by these proposals. I mean, it's frankly absurd, this proposal.
I remember you said, yeah, the first time you said, you were speaking at the last meeting about water in your basement.
Yeah.
Why don't you elaborate on that?
Sure, my basement has flooded at least five times since I've been there, and I'm there 22 years. Since then, I've put-
When you say flooded, is that because of groundwater or because of rain situation?
Rainwater.
Okay.
Right. Since then, I've put a French drain in my basement, two sump pumps. I put a French drain around my house and my pool. I have an in-ground pool that floods as well, because all the water is just rushing at my property and hopefully going in this sewer. I've had to redo my driveway five times to make a hump so the water doesn't rush right down my driveway and go into my basement immediately. I mean, it's, my house would be gone. It won't, it won't matter. Like, it's absurd, frankly absurd.
Okay, anything else you want us to hear?
That's it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone? Anyone want to be heard? I'm holding it open because I think you guys are talking whether you want to come up or not.
I'm sorry.
If anybody wants to come up, just raise your hand or stand up. Okay.
Ma'am, did you testify at the last hearing?
Yes, I was.
You did, okay. Please state your name and address again for the record.
Kelly Gonzalez, and 72 Spring Hill Road.
Thank you.
All right. Right next door. So I would be on this photo, I'd be on this side. The whole property line is, needs our property line. 72 Spring Hill Road would be in line with the buildings. Last time we were here, we discussed the site of it. Looking at it, the builder has agreed to leave the trees and eventually deed them so that I know in the future, nobody will be able to build their, you know, knock them down or whatever. That was my concern of seeing this. I've also, I mean, down the road if we have to, we'll also plant trees already on the other side, because we were here at one point in front of the board to build the garage. From my front door over, we've already planted 91 trees, evergreen trees. If I have to do the same thing on this side to not see it, my neighbor Steve who's here, his side, which he would be 66 Spring Hill Road, next door, go over another one, eventually, you know, he won't be able to see even our house, which, you know, he's for the builder as well. When it came to my last issue, I was here last time, was the entrance of it. I said that it's too close to the hump in the road. We did meet with the builder. I went around to the neighbors who were here last time. The builder offered to meet with us to talk about, you know, our issues. Those who did want to meet, we met, went through everything. He agreed, he did move it over instead of being so close to the hump like he was last time, which is our concern, because that was going to be close to my driveway pulling out. So I am happy, you know, he's, he is leaving the trees, even though the buildings are wider, now it's one less building, it's one less structure there, which I am happy with. Now, when it comes to accidents and stuff on that road, unfortunately, yes, we did have an accident recently. There are accidents that are going to happen no matter what. Unfortunately, hopefully the town or somebody could put in the flashing lights or something over there, or clean up that brush that's blocking those stop signs. But, I mean, by creating a shoulder, moving it over, I think he's benefited. My, like I said, 72 Spring Hill is going to be right in line with those buildings, and I'm for this project.
Would you point out on that map, I can see where you're pointing out, and I have one in front of me.
Oh.
Just point out where your property is, please.
The whole side, on the whole side.
Of the sou-
The whole southern property line.
The southern property line.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the actual location of the house should be right in line with, according to our survey of 72 and this, it should be right in line with his buildings.
Got it. Okay, thank you, ma'am. Is that one of the Boy Scouts coming up here? No. Guess I'm not. Anyone else want to be heard?
Yes.
You're coming up, ma'am? Okay.
Ma'am, did you testify at the last hearing?
Yes, I did.
Okay, just please state your name and address for the record again.
Carolyn Smolgin, 56 Spring Hill Road.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm still not completely happy with what I'm seeing here. I do appreciate the fact that the builder took the time to speak to my neighbors. Unfortunately, I could not attend that day. And although I'm a little bit happier with what I see, what I'm not happy about is this third floor. Based on a recommendation from the builder to my husband and the other folks that were there that day, I went and saw some property over off of Spring Valley Road, where it gives you an idea of what these homes could look like, these townhomes. These things were maestrosities. These were huge. They don't fit into the surrounding neighborhood. We are filled with one- and two-story family homes, one- and two-story businesses. Most of them are small businesses, except, I would say, the only exception to that would be 7-Eleven and Wawa on Route 34. The school, Cheesecake Farm, or Cheesecake School is only two stories, and the firehouse is only basically two stories, okay? I can't see this huge, these two huge buildings just looming over us on Spring Hill Road. And when I talk about Spring Hill Road, I'm having a real issue too with the safety of the road. Now, what I did was I went to the township and asked for five years' worth of accidents for Spring Hill Road. There have been 43 accidents in the timeframe that I asked for. Most of those accidents have actually occurred not in the middle of Spring Hill, not even at the corner of Cottrell and Spring Hill, where there have been a few accidents, but the, if you go north of where the property is, you have Old Mill and Spring Hill Road at a intersection. That's where most of these accidents are occurring. It is a dangerous intersection that has to be looked at before we can even consider putting something like this in. If we don't, we are doing a disservice to the residents who may be moving in and the residents who already live there. I mean, I myself have been there since April of 1989. This is my home. This is my neighborhood. I don't want to see anything happen, and if we need to make improvements to the roads first, I think we need to look at that. Not just look at putting, you know, building up property just because it's there. That doesn't make any sense to me, because we're only going to add to what's been happening with every one of these accidents that I've looked over. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I would just say, on your last comment, that the applicant doesn't have control of the streets, so-
Of the township, and the county did.
Correct, and which is not the burden on the applicant. That may be the burden on the county, or it may be a burden on the council. Oh, absolutely.
Okay. I realize it's not his job to make the intersection better.
Right, he has no control over that.
I get that. But we as the residents, and we as the residents of Old Bridge, should have some control over that, along with the county of Middlesex, because what you're looking at is, Spring Hill Road is a county road. So Old Bridge actually can't do anything on that road. However, they have access to Old Mill, because that is a township road. And I think the township and the county need to get together on this and figure out something to make that intersection better before we start putting more residents on the street. Because you're talking about 64 units, at least 64 vehicles there, and as we heard before, possibly like upward of 100, if not more. This is going to make this particular intersection, which is right here, even more dangerous than it already is, especially when you're talking about 55 and older. Now, I'm not talking about people who are like 55 to 65, maybe even the 70, but if you get those older folks who still feel that they need to drive, they're going to have a problem here. And I don't want to see anybody hurt. I don't want another death on our road like we had with Ashley Barton. I refuse to let that happen again, because that was a tragedy that we don't need. And this intersection is going to cause another tragedy at some point if we, the township, don't do something about it. And I'm bringing it up here because with this project, it just brings it forefront for me. And if I have to go to the county, I will.
Well, I agree with you that I don't think anybody wants to see any accidents, but they're going to happen, and I don't want anybody to see any deaths, but they're going to happen. That intersection is fully controlled because it's county-through by the intersection, by the county, not by the township.
Okay.
The township has no jurisdiction over that intersection.
So I need to go to the county then?
Right.
All right.
I have a question of Mr. Goen. Did you make application in Middlesex County Planning Board?
We have not yet, but we will have to.
Okay.
We will certainly have to. When we, if this application gets approved and we move to the site plan phase of the application, we would make application to Middlesex County Planning Board. They would review this, just like this board would review the site plan. At this point, it's basically premature, because we don't have a fully engineered-
Yeah, no, I understand that. Well, let me, let me just ask a question, because, you know, there is some case law dealing with bifurcated applications. I'll cite the cases. I think it's the Scholastic Bus Case. I think it's the House of Fire Case, both appellate division cases, which deal with issues. In order to permit a zoning board of adjustment to make an informed decision, oftentimes, the board does have the purview to request some additional information that might be necessary. Now, I understand you didn't apply to the Middlesex County Planning Board. Perhaps you should have, though, because you're asking this board to make a determination on a use variance application that involves traffic issues. You've had a traffic engineer testify twice, you know, or at least twice, you know, for this application. So, you know, maybe we could, maybe we could take a break and talk about this. Mr. Chairman, I could talk about it with counsel, but it's just something that just popped into my mind, that it is a county road, and perhaps we should have some insight from the Middlesex County.
Thank you, ma'am. I thought there was one other person who wanted to be heard before. Come on up. Can you testify on the right thing? Yeah. Sir, young man, or sir? Please raise your right hand, I'll swear you in. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth's up your gut? All right, please state your name, spelling your last name and address for the record.
My name is James Nyhus, N-Y-H-U-S. I'm a resident at 75 Spring Hill Road, directly across the street from this abomination. I'm here with my Boy Scout troop. As you can see, they're sitting in the back. I've been teaching my Boy Scouts for many years, basically since I've been a scout myself. I teach them on my own property. I teach them on my own property for my own use, because it's easier for me. If this gets built and the runoff from this building gets sent into my yard, we're not going to be able to practice this. We're not going to be able to go outside and do what we do. We're going to have to find someplace else, which is going to be a huge hassle for us. It's going to cost us money to rent out somewhere to do this. We also run a food drive called The Haunted Woods of Old Bridge. We raise so much food for this food bank in Old Bridge, because we want to teach the boys that doing good is good. We want to teach them that this is right. With this, we're going to have to stop doing that, because there's no way that we're going to be able to continue doing this.
Anything else you want to tell the board? Thank you very much for your time. Ma'am?
Ma'am, please raise your right hand, I'll swear you in. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth's up your gut?
I do.
Please state your name, spelling your last name, address for the record.
Catherine Ziola, Z as in zebra, I-O-L-A. I am an owner of the, through Old Mill Road. My son resides there now. My mother passed away about 17 years ago. For 17 years, we've had numerous offers. We've even had an offer from the fire commissioner, which we really liked the idea, but then they settled on the 516, which was formerly the Brown Town School. About two years ago, Mr. Bolton approached us, and he wanted to work on a project. We entered into an agreement with him, and for the last almost two years, he's diligently worked on a project that he feels would fit the property, and that for three reasons. One, would be feasible for him to build. Two, would benefit the township of Old Bridge. And three, would be something that our family would be happy to have built on the property. My family has been in Old Bridge for 93 years. My mother spent 77 years of her life in that house, so I know a lot about the changes in Old Bridge. I feel a restricted community is a very necessary need for the changing lifestyle of adults my age. Many of our friends have already moved from their homes where they raised their children to go to an area where they can have smaller accommodations and be in an area where they're virtually maintenance-free. They don't, can go out, get in their car, they don't have to mow the lawn, they don't have to worry about snow removal, and they want to still stay in the area because their families are here. And for my family, I accept the project, because it's a small piece of property. What can you possibly develop it with? I think he's worked very hard. I like the idea that he's kept the pool, because I think it adds to that community, gives it a rather casual and relaxing lifestyle. Also, the way that property is, it's higher. With his buffering and his planting, it looks atrocious now, but I don't believe it will be that outstandingly atrocious. As far as traffic, Old Mill Road and Spring Hill, it's always been a problem. And as far as townhouses in the area, right, Spring Hill Village is a huge townhouse community that was built, and it's not that far down the road. It's just at the corner of Old Mill and Spring Hill. I feel for the town of Old Bridge, he's given, he's filling a void that we don't really have, which is a restricted age area. He's used some of the affordable housing, and also, he's going to, if this proposed project goes through, it's going to add revenue to the town without putting any kind of undue strain on the school system. So I am in favor of his project. I've worked with him, talked with him for two years. I know that he's worked very hard, and he's trying to formulate this, so it is a project that would enhance the area. And I would appreciate it if the board could give every consideration to working with him.
Anything else, ma'am? Thank you for your historical review of that, and thank you for attending this evening. Anyone else want to be heard on this matter? Come on up, sir. I know. I'll give you a-
Is there a question?
No, no. She's a, she's a member of the public.
Can we get your name again?
It's Ralph Maron. The last time I was here, I asked the board if you're familiar with this road. And I know you said, oh, we all live in Old Bridge, and we're all, well, I have lived in Old Bridge for 25 years. I'm not familiar with every road in Old Bridge. I urge all of you, before you make a decision, to drive on this road and look at the spot where they think they're going to build this, and the driveway that's there, and how it's all going to fit. The other comment I have-
It's a mile away, I'm very familiar with it.
The other comment I have is that we all have septic systems. I presume this is going to be a public sewer?
I don't have site plan yet, but-
That is the plan.
So how does that now affect, is there sewer going to come down that road? Am I going to be connected to the sewer somehow? Like, I need-
On 34, right?
Well, unless Mr. Delaney wants to testify and indicate how, where the, where the proposed sewer hookup will be.
There's some preliminary discussions with the MUA prior to the initial application. There's an existing sewer to the west along, I'll make sure I get it right, along Old Mill Road, up and up in the 34 area. There's nothing along Spring Hill Road. So we have to extend the site up into ours, and then gravity it down into that location. Because of the elevation changes, the only way to get the sewer up to Route 34 from the properties that are on Spring Hill Road would be to put ejector pumps and pump a force main up into those, into those sewers. Have to come through our site, the site to do it to tie into our manhole. I can't speak for the applicant, but, you know, probably discussions, if there was opportunities to do something like that, we can, I assume we could talk about it. about it. Um, I don't know what the cost would be, um, for the, for the homeowners or so to do that, but also have to tie in with the way and see what their requirements would be as well.
You're not gonna run it down Spring Hill then?
Not coming down Spring Hill, we extend along, you know, Old, Old Mill, um, up into the site and come through the emergency access into the cul-de-sac.
I have a problem with new homes built on my road getting access to public sewer that I don't have. That's just another issue. The other thing for the record is, I was not aware of any builder meeting, nor was I invited to it.
Ma'am, are you gonna add something new, or are you just gonna respond to the comment that was...
I'm gonna respond to that.
I, I don't know if it's really necessary, I, I'm not gonna get into a battle...
I just wanna make it known, it was offered. Kelly Gonzalez, sorry.
Okay, I, I'm not gonna get in, I'm not going to, I, I don't think this board needs to entertain disputes between members of the public, so, okay.
We prefer not to.
Right.
Anyone else? No one has, uh, raised their hand, I'm gonna close the public portion. You wanna have a short break with the, uh, with Mr. Goen and the applicant, right? We're standing recessed five minutes. I'd like to call the meeting back to order, Ms. Silverman, could we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 President.
Here.
Mr. Cleo Clowney's here.
Mr. Goen.
Um, so, after hearing the comments from the board and the public and the board's professionals, um, what we'd like to do at this time is carry the application to the next available hearing without further notice.
Ms. Silverman.
Our next meeting will be up before.
Before, uh, end this, I wanna just, uh, put two things in the record, uh, and I know you have them, right? The, uh, Environmental Commission report?
I do.
Okay, and Mr. Garrity's report?
Yes.
Okay. September fifth, the Old Bridge Township Zoning Board, uh, from the Chair of the Old Bridge Environmental Commission. In reference this application, uh, she writes, having reviewed the application, Old Bridge Environmental Commission believes it does not fit in with the local aesthetics of the object, or three-story, or two-story, as in the neighborhood. And Mr. Garrity authors on, uh, August twenty-four of this year, reference fountains. Uh, here's a copy of my review, the updated plan for the fountains, water main size is required to be eight-inch minimum, should you have any questions, feel free. So I just wanna make note that those two, uh, other reports are added to the file. Uh, having said that, it's going to be ten-four, correct? No further notice? Anything, you don't wanna say anything else, Mr. Goen?
Uh, just one quick point, that Sean made a good point. And we did hear from the board's professionals, we did hear from the, um, from the public. Um, I don't hear, know that we heard much commentary from the board. We're, we're, the plan now is that we are going to have some kind of meeting or review with, uh, Middlesex County Planning Board, um, to talk about Spring Hill Road and what might be required by that agency in the event that we submit a site plan application to it. Um, but I'm wondering if there are any other comments or concerns from the board that we could address in the interim, between now and October fourth.
Uh, you want me to go left or right here?
I mean, I... Whatever you want.
Yeah, if, do you have any, uh, any comments or questions that you want researched before the next meeting? Mr. Skaggs?
Sewage.
Sewage?
Yes.
You mean drainage?
Drainage.
You mean a water runoff, not sewer?
Storm sewer.
No, sanitary sewer.
No, sanitary sewer? Is that what you're talking about? Okay, sanitary sewer?
There was question regarding service and...
Right, okay. Just so we have that correct. Ms. Kilduff. Mr. DuHurst?
The size of the two buildings, is there any way to make that smaller, such as the amount of apartments, or I should say, houses, are they gonna be there?
You're talking about height, or just overall dimension?
Dimension, overall dimension.
Mr. Walker.
Personally, I'm against the application, I'm not gonna be able to support this application. It's in an R-twenty zone, the project does not fit in the R-twenty zone, does not qualify. The Environmental Commission's against it. Um, it's kind of ironic, but the last, and I, and I know people were talking about the, uh, accidents on Spring Hill Road, but I was coming back from a fire call that next morning after our last meeting, and what did I run up on was a accident at Old Mill and Spring Hill Road. The, uh, site triangles in that area are just absolutely terrible, you can't see anything going on those roads, so, I, I think adding another hundred cars in this, in this is just, uh, it's just not gonna be, it's not, it's not gonna fit, it's not a good project, and I'm, I'm sorry, but I can't support the project.
I, to myself, I have no negative comments. Mr. Stoner? No, I'm just gonna wait. Okay. Ms. Chevrolet?
I want to reserve my comments after I see the county's report.
Okay. All right, Mr. Goen?
Thank you.
All right, uh, for those here in the courtroom and, uh, anyone watching tonight on TV, this matter will be continued, October four, twenty-eighteen, no further notice. Please make note, if, uh, anyone here wants to attend. Mr. Goen, thank you and your professionals. I thank all of the citizens who came in tonight to weigh in on, uh, and comment on this project. Thank you. Board professionals, thank you.
Thank you.
Town professionals, I should say. Uh, Mr. Sacks, anything you wanna report before we move for adjournment?